All right, good morning, everyone. It is Tuesday, February 13, 9:00 a.m. We are here for a hearing of the Joint Committees on Energy and Environmental Protection, and Labor, and Government Operations in Conference Room 325. We have two bills on the agenda this morning. First up is House Bill 1829 relating to electric vehicle charging infrastructure. This requires that if parking is included in any new state building construction, the design provide 25% parking stalls be EV charger-ready, and requires the Energy Office to identify high-priority state facilities for retrofitting to add charging to. And first up to testify, we have DAGs in support.
Well, good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members. DAG stands on its written testimony in support of this measure. Mahalo.
Thank you. And then we have Energy Office.
Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committee, this is Chris Junker for the Hawaii State Energy Office. We stand on our written testimony in support and are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Blue Planet Foundation.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committee. Jody Robinson with Blue Planet will stand on our testimony in support of this lead by example for EV charging bill. Thank you.
And Ulu Pono Initiative.
Good morning, Chair Loewen, Chair Mariyoshi, Vice Chair Garrett, members of the committees. Micah Munikata here on behalf of the Ulu Pono Initiative. We stand on our testimony in support of this measure. Just wanted to highlight a few things. You know, we do view this policy to be future-proofing for the state. There's a need to invest in workplace charging to better align with charging opportunity with lower cost of time of use rates. We also believe that in some cases, in some of the research, we found EV-ready costs were an estimated .13% to .17% of the total construction costs, usually about $1,000 per space or less. In California, it's demonstrated that retrofits easily cost two to eight times more than doing it up on the front end. Some of Ulu Pono's own research has found that the cost of developing a structured parking stall is roughly $42,000 to $57,000 per space. So this $1,000 or so, under a quarter of a percent, is sort of a low incremental that seems like a great option to pursue the EV readiness side of things. I do want to state, we do have a recommendation, Chairs, to reconsider some of the language around new construction for EV charging ready where feasible and cost-effective. I think that may be one of those things that tends to hinder this measure. Obviously, things are going to cost a little bit more, but again, just taking into consideration the costs that might be a little bit less on the front end so that we don't have to do a lot more on the back end. Thank you very much, Chairs.
Thank you. And then Hawaiian Electric in support. And then Alliance for Automotive Innovation on -- thank you. We have additional written testimony in support from the Climate Commission, Hawaii Climate Action Coalition, Climate Protectors Hawaii, 350 Hawaii, and four additional individuals. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members, any questions? Go ahead.
Chair DAGs, please. Good morning, Mr. Comptroller. How many projects do we currently have on the books that would -- that this bill would apply to?
I'm sorry, I don't have that information with me, but I can get that to your office.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Any other members have questions?
Ulu Pono. You know, I'm surprised it's $1,000 bucks a stall. This is just to make it EV charger-ready, to put a wire in the ground to a parking spot with wet concrete. I mean, how is this so expensive?
You know, the cost of parking stalls is crazy when you think about it. It's -- it really just depends on the project, to be quite honest. You know, where you're making the connection, how far you have to take the conduit, those are some of the costs you have to consider, and every project is different, obviously. The closer you are to that connection point, the less cost there would be on the front end. In this case, this was just sort of a general overview study across the U.S. that was putting in at about $1,000. We do think that in Hawaii, it's actually a little higher.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I guess a quick question for the Energy Office. Last year, I think we looked at this measure, and for the retrofit piece, I think the number, the dollar amount that we have in there was geared towards, you know, what would we need if we were just going to look at a couple of facilities? I mean, right now, it's at $200,000. Do you think that that still holds? And do you think that you can still do the work at the Energy Office of identifying, like, the highest potential candidates for retrofits without having to do a more comprehensive kind of study? Or what do you think is the best approach?
The way the bill is written, yes, we worked with you last year on the language. I think that it's set up, and we interpreted as the Energy Office can do a high-level study and survey to identify those priority facilities, and then having that money available to DAG so they can do the detailed assessment, and any implementation is set up that's appropriate. I would leave the cost question to DAGs.
Okay, thanks. DAGs, do you have -- just to make sure we're getting the right recommendations in our committee report, we'll probably blank out the dollar amounts today, but do you think that $200,000 is the correct number, or do you want to get back to us?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we're going to defer to the Energy Office in terms of the overall costs, but in terms of our commitment to being a part of this, obviously, DAGs wants to support this measure, and we'll do what we can to make sure that this moves forward. So if you'd like us to go back and reanalyze the dollar amount and then get back to the committee, we certainly can.
I think the intent is that Energy Office is gonna do kind of a high-level survey of existing state facilities and pick one or two that would essentially be like a pilot to where, like, these are the best candidates to retrofit. Maybe they don't need as much make-ready work or something. And then what would the cost be for DAGs to at least to move forward, maybe whether it's just planning and design phase of actually doing that work or including construction? Just to have the numbers on --
Yeah, and again, that's going to depend on the size of the project itself, too, right? Those pilot projects, so that's where we'll have to really just sit down and work very closely with the Energy Office to make sure that we get the proper information for you.
Okay, that sounds good. So maybe I'll follow up after, and before we get to conference, we'll come up with something.
Most important thing I just want to relay to the committee is that we are willing to work very closely with the Energy Office on this matter.
I do appreciate that. Thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, if not, we'll move on to the next bill on the agenda, which is House Bill 2414 relating to energy, and this just basically sets labor standards for large-scale renewable energy projects. And first up to testify, we have the Energy Office.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs. Cameron Black from the Hawaii State Energy Office. We stand on our testimony in support of this measure. We believe this bill will help build Hawaii's talent pipeline needed to build the succession of renewable energy projects we're going to need over the coming decades to meet our clean energy goals. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And then we have DLIR.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and Committee members. Jade Bhutaipur, DLIR. We strongly support this governor's package that supports labor laws, including apprenticeship and occupational safety and health. Apprenticeship is a win-win for employers and workers who can earn while they learn. This measure will help both local employers and workers develop the capacity and skills that will be required for Hawaii to meet the renewable energy mandate by 2045. Thank you.
And then Blue Planet Foundation.
Aloha. Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committee. Jody Robinson with Blue Planet will stand on our testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. And Hawaiian Electric in person? Okay, come on up.
Morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committee. Greg Schimokha for Hawaiian Electric. I'm offering comments and proposed amendments, so just wanted to highlight the proposed exception language we're proposing to add, just in the case that there's a determination that union labor is not able to help meet the contractual deadlines for projects.
Thank you. And then we have Hawaii Regional Council of Carpenters on Zoom. Someone there from Carpenters, I assume? Please go ahead.
Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Chair, Nathaniel Kinney for the Hawaii Regional Council of Carpenters. You have our written testimony. I just would like to emphasize that, you know, allowing -- all of this measure does is dovetail prevailing wages and state-approved apprenticeship programs. Those requirements are in the Inflation Reduction Act, the Federal Inflation Reduction Act. So basically, what this does is allow developers to access tax credits that make these projects cheaper and more affordable for the end user, which is all of us who are ratepayers. So, you know, this isn't anything brand-new. This has been introduced in other states and has passed in other states. We'd like to take exception, though, to some of this language that was provided by some of the other testifiers by providing some sort of exemption to the law that would basically take the entire -- defeat the entire purpose of the bill if you're able to exempt the developer from that. Plus, I'm just not -- I'm unclear as to why -- I'm unclear as to why exempting a developer or contractor from these requirements is even necessary. And then if you exempt the requirements from the developer or the contractor, then they wouldn't be able to access these tax credits. So that's just a mystery to us. And then all these -- the current projects are being built are being built using contractors that provide prevailing wages, and any of the other contracts that weren't able to be executed were more elements of the agreement that was -- the power purchase agreement that was -- that came between negotiations between HECO and the developer. It wasn't a lack of manpower. It was that the constraints of the power purchase agreement between HECO and the developer were to owner-own. That's why a lot of these projects haven't gotten started. So to somehow say --
Nat, can you summarize, please?
Yeah. Yeah, so I'm -- again, the comments from HECO are a little bit mysterious to us. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the people we have who requested to testify in person. We have additional written testimony from PRP in support, Moss and Associates in support, operating engineers in support, and one individual in opposition. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members, any questions? All right, if not, I think we can go straight to decision-making. Are we ready? Ready? Take the vote? We're good, too. Okay. So first up, we're going to vote on House Bill 1829. For this, we're going to blank out the dollar amounts, make a note in the committee report of the amount that had been recommended in the bill, defect the date, and some additional technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and defect the date to the year 3000. With that, members, any discussion? If not, Vice Chair, please take the vote.
Voting on HB -- Voting on HB 1829. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Both Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Gates is excused. Representative Kahaloa.
Aye.
Representative Perusso.
Aye.
Representative Woodson is excused. Representative Ward is excused. Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. And then next, we have House Bill 2414. So with this, we're just going to make some technical amendments for clarity. Oh, I'm sorry.
She just wants to defer it for us. Hang on. Members, same recommendation. Any comments? Hearing done, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. LGO members voting on House Bill 1829. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Capella?
Aye.
Representative Martinez is excused. Representative Sayama?
Aye.
Representative Tam excused, as is Representative Alcos. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members.
All right, sorry about that. Next, we have House Bill 2414. Again, for this, just some technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, defect the date to the year 3000 and move this forward. Members, any discussion? If not, please take the vote.
Thank you. Voting on HB 2414. Chair recommends to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, noting excused absences of Woodson, Ward, and Gates. Members, any noes or reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. Over to LGO.
Yep, members, same recommendation. Any comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. LGO members voting on House Bill 2414. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the excused absences of Representatives Martinez, Tam, and Alcos. Anyone voting with reservations are nay. Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
All right, and we are adjourned. All right, and we are turned. All right, we're back. This time, 9:05 a.m. agenda through Tuesday, February 13th, Conference Room 325. We have Joint Committee on Energy and Environmental Protection and Committee on Water and Land. And I'll turn it over to Water and Land to run testimony this morning.
Aloha. Okay, so getting into testimony, starting with HB 2743, we have University of Hawaii, Department of Health.
Morning Chair, Committee Members. John Nagato, Department of Health. The department stands by its written testimony in support of this measure. Available for questions.
Thank you. Hawaii County Council, Heather Kimball on Zoom.
Aloha. Good afternoon or morning, everyone. I am calling here from DC to express my strong support for this bill, 2743, and the two companion measures, 2066 and 1691. Working with Rep. Lowen, Rep. Ishiyama, Chairs, thank you, as well as Majority Leader Nakamura. I think the counties and the states have come together to produce a really nice agreement that allows us to all have a little skin in the game with respect to addressing cesspools and their conversion on all of the counties. So just want to mahalo all of you folks that have helped work with us to come forward with these three bills. For my strong support as Council Chair for Hawaii County, as well as President of the State Association of Counties. I do have some proposed amendments in each of my testimonies for those bills, but I'm encouraged that we'll come to something that everybody can get on board with. Thank you for your support and your time today. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next is Tax Foundation of Hawaii on Zoom. Gwamiamachika.
Yes, good morning, Chairs, members of the committee. This is Jane McMillan on behalf of Gwamiamachika for the Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We've submitted some comments on the measure. Our comments are limited to the section or Part C, which creates the new cesspool pollution phase. We'll stand on our written comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition.
Thank you, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committees. Ted Boland on behalf of the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. Any day that we get to talk about nine cesspool bills is a good day. I've been working on this issue a long time. I was a Deputy Attorney General for 15 years representing the wastewater branch of the Department of Health, and I served on the cesspool conversion working for four years. So I've been doing it for so long that when people think of me, they think of cesspools. It's not a comfortable situation. Anyway, I agree with the last speaker. This is a great bill. I'm really excited to see it moving forward. We've identified the problem with cesspools. They're bad for public health. They directly discharge into the groundwater without treatment, goes into the ocean, people get sick from that. It also is really terrible for the reefs, which is why Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition is so concerned. It grows algae which smothers the reefs, and we can't afford to lose our coral at a time of rising sea temperatures. We really need to take on this problem. But it is very expensive, and so how we're going to do that is really the issue. Where is the funding going to come from? This bill provides the authority of the counties to get involved in the game, as the last speaker said, with, first of all, with plans so that they, comprehensive wastewater plans, so that people know which areas are going to be sewed, and they can connect to the sewer rather than put in an individual wastewater system, and also to have authority to charge fees. I do want to correct one thing in the description. It's not completely wrong, but it says, it refers to monthly fees, authority for counties to charge monthly fees. It also, in the bill, gives the county some authority to choose funding mechanisms. So it's not necessarily monthly fees. But it is fair, I think, that the people who have cesspools, who are currently getting a free ride, eventually pay some amount for this. But that's for the counties to work out in the future. For now, it's just a matter of giving authority, and I think this is a great bill, and I urge the committee to pass it, and I thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next is Public Access to Sunscreens, Lynn Miahira on Zoom.
Aloha. My name is Lynn Miahira, and I'm representing the Public Access to Sunscreens. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify, and we just want to stand on our written support for this bill. We think a comprehensive approach like this that includes the counties is important to address the cesspool problem that is statewide. So mahalo for the opportunity to testify, and we stand in our support.
Thank you. Next is Wastewater Alternatives and Innovations, Stuart Coleman on Zoom.
Aloha, good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and Committee Members. My name is Stuart Coleman, and I'm representing VI, Wastewater Alternatives and Innovations. And we have been working with some of the Chairs, Majority Leader, and council members on this bill to create a comprehensive strategy with the county and the states. It's long overdue. So we strongly support this bill, and we'll be available for questions and comments. Mahalo.
Thank you. That's all signed up to testify. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony?
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair. My name is Lindsay Garcia. If you don't have a copy, we'll get it to you.
We have you on the list, just not signed up to testify. Yep, but we got your testimony. Anyone else? Okay, that's all signed up.
Any questions, members? All right, seeing none, we can move on.
Okay. Next is HB 2264 relating to cesspools. Attorney General on Zoom.
Present, Deputy Attorney General Candace Park. Good morning, Chair Lowen, Chair Ishiyama, Vice Chairs and members of the committees. We submit, we have submitted our written testimony, but just like to point out that the concern with Article 10, Section 6 of the Constitution can be alleviated by inserting that the matter is a law of statewide concern. Thank you, and I am available for questions.
Thank you. Department of Health?
Morning Chairs, Vice Chairs, Committee Members. John Nagato, Department of Health. The department stands by its written testimony, offering comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition.
Ted Boland again on behalf of the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. Thank you, Chairs. I want to thank Chair Lowen for her leadership on these cesspool issues, and I also want to, should have said in the last bill, thanks to Representative Nakamura for her work on this issue as well. This bill establishes a pilot program to demonstrate technologies. This is really important, too, because we need new technologies that are more affordable as ways to treat cesspools, and this would be a three-year pilot program at UH to do that. I think this bill is great. It should add an appropriation amount, and I've submitted amendments that would do that. But otherwise, it's a good bill, and I ask the committee to pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Access to Sunscreens on Zoom.
Hi, this is Lynn Miahira again. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify. We also stand in our support of this bill. I agree with Ted that it is a good bill and should move forward, and we need new technologies that are, that people can afford, and so having a program at the University of Hawaii would be great. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Okay, that's all signed up to testify. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony? Seeing none, members, any questions?
I'll ask a question. Sorry, I wasn't clear if anyone was here from University of Hawaii. I know they didn't sign up to testify in person. Okay, never mind then. Can move on if no other questions. Oh, go ahead.
It was to the same party.
Okay, moving on to HB, oh, any more questions? Okay, moving on to HB 2066, DCC.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committee. We'll stand on our written testimony. I'll be here for questions.
Thank you. Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committee. Gwamiamamotolau, Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority. We stand on our written testimony in support of this bill. Just wanted to stress that it's important to give homeowners who don't have, might not have options for financing, a non-traditional financing option that is also fiscally responsible, good fiscal stewards of our public funds. I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Health?
Morning Chairs, Vice Chairs, Committee Members. John Nagato, Department of Health. The department stands by its written testimony and offers comments. Will be available for any questions. Thank you.
Hawaii County Council on Zoom, Heather Kimball. Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition.
Thank you, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committees. Ted Boland for Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. This also is a good bill, and it would provide additional opportunities for some low-income homeowners to afford the costs of cesspool upgrades. So I urge the committee to pass it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Public Access to Sunscreens on Zoom.
Aloha. My name is Lynn Miahira with the Public Access to Sunscreens, and we also echo the support for this bill. Like we said, the homeowners need options, and we think this is a good idea. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Hawaii Realtors. Thank you. Hawaii Bankers Association on Zoom. Oh, there you are.
Good morning, Chairs. Mihoko Ito on behalf of the Hawaii Bankers Association. While we do appreciate that this bill represents and provides for an alternative financing mechanism and support the intent of the bill to fund projects like cesspool conversion, we are fundamentally opposed to the way this program is set up. And the reason for that is that the program actually links the loans to property tax, and by doing that, it creates a super lien over other liens or mortgages that may be on the property. We do think that that will ultimately negatively impact banks' overall stability and elevate risk, which would then in turn tighten credit markets and the, impact the availability of overall capital. So while we appreciate the intent of the bill, we do suggest that there are many other examples of successful financing programs that have been implemented on the mainland, like community development financial institutions, subsidized loan programs, and we're happy to be a part of that discussion. But as drafted, we do oppose this proposal. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. BIA Hawaii. Okay, Wastewater Alternatives and Innovations on Zoom.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and Committee Members. Stuart Coleman again from VI, and we stand in strong support of this bill. Just as a comment to the previous testifier, we have looked and we've worked with Gwamiamamotolau and looked into other sources of financing from bank CDFIs, and there were none that were available and ready to be set up. And so, you know, we know that they have worked it in such a way that this bill will also allow us to appeal for more federal funds, that we could maybe get matching funds. So we are in strong support of this bill. Mahalo.
Thank you. That's all signed up to testify. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony?
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committee. My name is Grace Rolfe with the Public Utilities Commission. I believe we submitted testimony, but if not, we'll get that to you. We are in support of this measure and offer some comments. Happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Any members, questions?
All right, I have some questions, I guess, for Mihoko. How similar is this? I mean, I know we had the CPACE bill a year, was it last year or the year before? The year before.
It was the year before in 2022.
And ended up taking out the individual residential option because of concerns then. And now, at this time, councils are still figuring out how to move forward with the commercial piece of it. So how is that going? And I mean, has anything changed between then and now?
That's a good question. I'd have to get back to you on how the implementation has been going. I can speak to the history of enacting CPACE. Right at the time, both options, commercial and residential PACE, were being discussed. And, you know, as a compromise, residential was taken off the table because not many states have actually implemented residential PACE because of the concerns on the impact on other credit markets. And on the commercial PACE side, what was done was that a notice, a written consent and notice provision was put in so that subsequent lien holders would have to consent before the recording of a PACE loan. So I think that that was the compromise that was done. On the implementation of CPACE, I'm not sure where that is.
Okay. And I can ask. As a homeowner, I guess, what are the concerns? I mean, you're talking about the impact to credit markets, but what happens to the homeowner in this situation?
Well, there was a study done by the CFPB, the federal organization, and they actually produced a study. They studied the impact on homeowners and said that when PACE loans, in the markets where PACE loans were allowed, that those homeowners are, had a way greater chance of default and running into problems because of that extra payment, right, that the PACE loan would require. So I think that's our concern, is that then it has a downward stream, right, impact. And then for the banks who, you know, loan based on risk, right, it increases their risks so that it has an impact on the credit market.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, members? All right, go ahead. Thanks. We'll move on.
Moving on to HB 1759 relating to cesspools, University of Hawaii, Environmental Health Administration, Department of Health.
Morning Chairs, Vice Chairs, Committee Members. John Nagato, Department of Health. The department stands by its written testimony, offering comments, and we're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition.
Morning Chair, it's Vice Chairs, members of the committees. Ted Boland on behalf of the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. Testifying in strong support of this bill. This would require cesspools that are attached to or used by housing or lodging, that it provides transient accommodations be upgraded by 2030. I think it's appropriate that the transient accommodation buildings be required to upgrade sooner than 2050, and this bill would accomplish that. So we're in strong support. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all signed up to testify. Anyone else wishing to provide testimony? Seeing none, questions?
Move on. Thanks.
Moving on to HB 1894, Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and members of both committees. Dante Hirata Epstein from Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority. We stand on our written testimony in support of the bill and are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Health.
Morning Chairs, Vice Chairs, Committee Members. John Nagato, Department of Health. The department stands by its written testimony in support with comments to this measure. We're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition.
Morning Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committee. Ted Boland on behalf of the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify. This bill would provide funding for an outreach and education program. That's important because customers, owners are going to have questions about how this is going to work. When do they have to do it? How do they have to do it? So it's very important for a successful program of cesspool upgrades that there be outreach and education. Other jurisdictions have experienced that. I think we need to do it here if the program is going to work well. It's not a lot of money, but it's important for public awareness of what we're doing, and I strongly support the bill. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Public access to sunscreens on Zoom?
Hi, this is Lynn Miaheira representing the Public Access to Sunscreens. We also stand in our support of this bill, and thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Hawaii Realtors?
Aloha, Chairs, Vice Chairs. My name is Lindsay Garcia from the Hawaii Realtors. So we're generally supportive of this bill, especially the education efforts, which are very, very important. We do have some comments, however, so we're hoping that these concerns could hopefully be addressed. So specifically, when it comes to the tool that is pointed to in the bill, we just wanted to point out that the tool itself does not provide the actual deadline for converting that people would access. The other thing we wanted to point out was that the Department of Health can actually provide an exemption for properties to not have to convert their cesspools. So we wanted to know whether the tool would indicate that, whether there was an exemption for that particular property or not. And then, of course, whether, if someone has already converted, would the tool indicate that cesspool has already been converted on that property? And really what this is, is if incorrect information is disclosed on the mandatory disclosure form, that could create liability for the sellers and for the Realtors that represent them. So hopefully, this can be addressed within the tool so that these concerns will not be an issue for us. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all signed up to testify. Anyone else wishing to provide testimony? Okay, seeing none. Questions, members?
Rep. Prusa?
I have a question for the Department of Health. So in your testimony, you had offered some amendments, and one of those amendments asked for the appropriation to be made out of the general revenues, and then also asked for FTE positions. So I'm wondering, how many FTEs do you imagine would be necessary to effectuate this measure?
I don't know that at this time. That's why when I wrote this, I didn't. I can get to that. We can work on it, but I won't be able to answer you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, members? If not, Realtors, very quickly. Just to clarify, your concern is about making sure we're referencing the right tool specifically?
No, just within the tool itself, right? The Hawaii Cesspool Hazard Assessment Tool, right, is set up by UH, and we were able to find it online. The question is that within the tool itself, when someone is utilizing the tool, the information that I indicated in my testimony was not readily available or wasn't clear it would be available. So we just wanted to make sure that information would be in the tool so that the seller would be able to represent the information properly.
Okay. I guess, question, like, because disclosure of whether or not there is a cesspool is already part of the standard disclosure form. Where do Realtors stand? I mean, do you, I think, I'm just trying to decide how necessary we think it is to have this separate piece or not.
Right. So we're obviously not opposed to individuals utilizing the tool in order to gather additional information, but perhaps it may not be necessary to mandate its use within the seller's disclosure requirement, and it can just be part of the educational portion of this bill. That would be satisfactory, if that's okay with you.
Would it be, have you, do you know of instances where a buyer has not been properly informed there was a cesspool that would require conversion and then was sort of later shocked by that information that would have been relevant for them?
Not quite sure, but you could definitely see a situation where a sale could go awry because the buyer looks at the tool and says, oh, there's a cesspool there, but then decides not to buy, and then it turns out that actually the cesspool had already been converted, and so it wouldn't have been an issue. So we just, we can totally see situations where there could be confusion, and so we just want to ensure that that's addressed. But we understand where you're coming from.
Do you know if the Realtors, in their internal training, like when you're training new agents or doing continuing education, like taught, I mean, I know this is an issue that's talked about frequently among Realtors in my district anyway, but I would hope that anyone selling a property at this point would be well-informed and would make an effort to look into what was the status of that particular property's wastewater system, et cetera.
Yes.
But is it included in education for Realtors, you know?
Well, the actual mandate is upon the sellers, but the Realtor obviously is there to try to assist the seller with filling out the disclosure form properly.
Okay, so it's not, of course, the, you know, the actual mandate's on the seller, but when Realtors are being, you know, educated about issues in Hawaii, how to be a good Realtor, how to make sure they're getting all the relevant information, I mean, is this part of that, or should it be?
We could definitely look into that. If you'd like to see some additional modules that we could do to educate our members about the importance of converting cesspools and all of that, you'd be very open to that.
Or just making sure buyers are aware, like, more importantly, right?
It's definitely very important. We do have some very passionate members, right, in your district and in other places that do feel very strongly about the importance of cesspool conversion and ensuring that the community is educated about the issue.
Yeah. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, if no other questions, back over to you.
Okay. Moving on to HB 1691 relating to the environment, DLNR.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. Ryan Kanakoole, Department of Land and Natural Resources. We stand on our written testimony in support. However, right before I came up here, I spotted a potential correction. So on page two, line six through seven, the verbiage for subsection two reads, "The wastewater system is located at or below 1,500 feet below sea level." So my reading is, to trigger subsection two, the system has to be located negative 1,500 feet or below. If that's the intent, leave as is, but I suspect it's not. So for that, if it's not the intent, I would suggest amending line seven to read 1,500 feet above sea level. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Department of Health.
Morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Committee Members. John Nagato, Department of Health. The department stands by its written testimony, acknowledging the intent of the bill and offering comments. We'll be here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii County Council, Heather Kimball on Zoom. Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition.
Thank you, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committees. Ted Boland on behalf of the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. This bill is about denitrification. As I explained a few minutes ago, cesspools put out a lot of nitrogen, and that causes algae to grow and smothers reefs. So in areas where there's cesspool runoff, as described in this bill, it's particularly necessary to worry about the nitrogen and to require that individual wastewater systems, not just cesspools, but all individual wastewater systems, include denitrification capacity. Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition has proposed some amendments in addition to the one about sea level altitude, which is, I agree with. Two amendments. One is, this should apply to new individual wastewater systems or modified ones. It should not apply to existing ones unless they are modifying. And also, I've suggested on behalf of the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition, a definition of denitrification capacity, which is used in the bill but isn't really explained. And there's a national standard that it can be adopted for this purpose. So with those amendments, I would urge the committee to adopt this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Waste Water Alternatives and Innovation on Zoom?
Aloha, Chairs. Stuart Coleman from Waste Water Alternatives and Innovations. I would agree with Ted's comments and add that as an amendment, the specification that he was talking about, the national standard for denitrification, and it's the industry standard as well, is NSF 245. That's National Sanitation Foundation Rule 245, and that requires a minimum of 50% denitrification. And just to bring home how serious this issue is, in Suffolk County, New York, Long Island, the only place in the entire country that has more cesspools than Hawaii, the levels of nitrogen going out into the local waters has basically completely shut down the shellfish industry. And they have elevated rates of nitrogen in their drinking water, which are related to elevated rates of certain types of cancers. So in talking with folks back there, they're like, make sure you pass this denitrification is super important. You don't want to go through what we've gone through with the kind of turmoil in their seafood market and then just public safety and algal blooms. So thank you so much. I'm available for comments.
Thank you. That's all we have signed up to testify. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony? Okay, seeing none. Questions? Any questions? I think I'm good. No questions? Okay. Okay, no questions. We will move on to HB 1892 relating to cesspools. Attorney General.
Morning, Chairs and Members of the Committee. My name is Joanna Yeh, Deputy Attorney General, here to just point out that there may be a single-subject title issue with this bill. We have submitted written testimony and have included recommendations on how to address this issue. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority. Department of Taxation.
Morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. Department of Taxation, I'm Teresa Zetwick, and we stand on our written testimony, offering comments, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Department of Health.
Morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Committee Members. John Nagato, Department of Health. The department stands by its written testimony in support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Tax Foundation of Hawaii on Zoom.
Yes, good morning, Chairs, Members of the Committee. Jane McMillan on behalf of Arminia Machika for the Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We will stand on our written comments submitted to the measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition.
This is on 1892?
Yes.
Thank you. Ted Boland on behalf of the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. Thank you, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committees. This one is really important. I served, as I said before, I served on the Cesspool Conversion Working Group that came out with recommendations a little over a year ago with Representative Lowen and Stuart Coleman, and I thank everybody for their service and leadership. We need to start, we need to get started with the cesspools that are causing the most pollution. And Hawaii, University of Hawaii did a study which ranked cesspools in terms of that, and the Priority One and Priority Two are the ones that pollute the most. Those need to be upgraded before 2050. The reefs are dying. We need to do something to save them in a time of ocean temperatures that are rising. And the combination of rising ocean temperatures, other factors, and cesspool pollution is killing the reefs. So we need to get started, and we need to start by upgrading. The recommendation in the bill is, or what the bill requires, is that the Priority Ones be upgraded by 2035 and the Priority Level Two be upgraded by 2040. I want to emphasize the description here of the bill has 2045 for the Priority Twos. That's an amendment that should be made to correct that. The bill also provides for additional funds for the pilot grant program started a couple years ago under Act 153 of the Session Laws of Hawaii 2022. It's important to fund those and to upgrade the information in that. And lastly, it includes an income tax credit to help people who qualify with the cost of upgrading to a cesspool. So I think this is a great bill and a really necessary bill. Of all these nine, I think maybe this is the most necessary because we need to get started, and we need to have funding to get there. So thank you for the opportunity to testify. Please pass this bill.
Thank you. Hawaii Realtors? Waste Water Alternatives and Innovation on Zoom?
Aloha, Chairs, Committee Members. Stuart Coleman from VI. I would agree with what Ted said as a member of the state cesspool conversion working group with Chair Lowen. This is a really important bill, not only for the, you know, environmental reasons that Ted just mentioned and the public health reasons, but also just practically speaking, there's no way the state will be able to achieve the mandate under Act 125 to convert all these cesspools unless we have earlier deadlines for the most polluting ones. We have to start this process. There's a sense that, oh, we're just going to wait till 2050 among a lot of homeowners, and so we have to start the process. And we are, you know, as a side benefit, we have gotten federal grants to do workforce development for the state, and these will create green jobs that will pay well and last a long time. They won't have some of the boom and bust cycles of tourism or construction, and these jobs will help protect water quality and the environment and public health, but we have to have earlier deadlines to make these things work. Mahalo for your consideration.
Thank you. Next is Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party on Zoom.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Melody Aduhak, co-chair of the Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii, and we have over 7,500 active members statewide. We strongly support HB 1892. Removing all cesspools by 2050 is daunting, costly, and way too late. Measures must be taken much earlier to preserve and let the environment recover from the pollution damage already sustained. This bill assists in this recovery by advancing the applicable deadlines by 10 years for Priority One cesspools and five years for Priority Two cesspools. It is also crucial to find sustainable solutions to protect Hawaii's environment and public health, namely, financial incentives. This bill offers financial assistance and tax breaks to homeowners who voluntarily upgrade their wastewater systems through the cesspool compliance grant project and an income tax credit for the cost of upgrading or converting. And may I also suggest that we employ some stricter regulations, such as regular inspections, to ensure compliance. And another suggestion would be to promote the use of reef-safe cleaning products and to discourage harmful chemicals that end up in cesspools. Thank you very much for this opportunity, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Next is Kelly Nishimura. Okay. That is all we have signed up to testify. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony?
Hi, this is Lynn Miaheira with the Public Access to Sunscreens. I'd also like to express my support for HB 1892 to move up the deadlines. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none. Questions?
Any questions? I'll ask, I guess, Ted, if you want to come forward. And as we start questions for this, too, just noting the next two bills cover really similar subject matter, so if people have, were planning to ask questions, maybe we just try to do them all upfront. Just wanted to touch on, I mean, we have a lot of different bills moving, and like you said, this one would implement kind of like one of the key recommendations of the Cesspool Conversion Working Group. And just to note, because you always mention, I served with you on the Cesspool Conversion Working Group and Stewart, but also Department of Health and every county's Department of Environmental Management and the banking industry and the Realtors. So it was a robust group of stakeholders and not just us deciding what should happen. In fact, I wasn't always able to be there as much as I wanted. But can you explain, I guess, especially because at the time that you were working at Department of Health, for example, when we used to have the tax credit, which was, I think, passed first back in 2014 or 15, the why the need to move the dates for it is urgent, not only because of the impact to the environment, but also for timing reasons? And I guess the reason I ask is I just want to understand, with all the other bills that we're considering for different financing options, without any sense of urgency, will people access these financing options, the ones that require more upfront, you know, cost to come from homeowner, like the tax credit or like the loans through HGIA? Will they have really any motivation to access those if there's not more of a push from the other side also to mandate the conversion?
Thank you, Chair Lowen, for that question. It's a good one. And that is, the point I think I would like to make is that, and I think your question implies, if you don't have a mandate, people are not going to upgrade because it costs money and they don't have to do it, they're not going to do it. money and they don't have to do it, they're not going to do it. The evidence of this, I mean, a few people will. I don't mean to say no, no one. But most people are not going to do it, and we're going to continue to have problems with public health and environment that we have now with wastewater pollution. Evidence of this is that in 2015, the legislature passed a tax credit, and they re-upped it a few years later. Almost nobody signed up. Something like 300 people statewide signed up for the tax credits. And the reason is, not only is that they don't have a mandate and therefore not that many people want to do it, the tax credit, you have to wait a year to get the refund, and you have to have a lot of taxes. It was a $10,000 maximum tax credit. Not everybody has $10,000 in state income tax. So it was a small pool of people who would really benefit, and it didn't have the push that you're referring to of a mandate. So that's why this bill, 1892, is so critical. If people don't have a mandate before 2050, they're going to sit on their hands until 2050, and then we're going to have 83,000 cesspools that need upgrade, and we're not going to be able to do it unless we get started. And we need to upgrade the Priority Ones in 2035, Priority Twos in 2040, the way this bill suggests. Thank you.
Thanks. And I guess, just to expand on that a little, like, even with the, you know, we heard House Bill 20, was it 2066, like the GEMS financing program, or like any of these kind of revolving loan on bill financing options? I mean, those are great options, and we did see with the grant program, because that was a direct rebate for like a significant amount of money, that that did get utilized. But I'm concerned without the, and I wish, if Gwen was still here, I would ask her, but I'm just concerned without the change of dates, that even the on bill financing or revolving loan kind of program, like even those, there would just be no reason for anyone to voluntarily, voluntarily move forward with it without a sense of urgency. I mean, do you have the same opinion?
I agree with that. I think, I think without, without moving up the dates, there won't be a sense of urgency. You are correct, that we did have a program under Act 153, I think it's 2021, 15, 2022. And people not only signed up for it, but signed up for it in a matter of days. It wasn't a lot of, so $5 million, so, you know, over five years, so it wasn't a whole lot of people that could serve. It indicated that if you give people enough money in the grants, that they will sign up, but that's very expensive. This is a, the cesspool upgrades of 83,000 cesspools is over $2 billion, and just doing grants is, it's a difficult financial option for the state. So we need, the other options that you referred to are helpful as well, and the mandate is critical to get people so that they want to get into it. And then we need, and then equally critical is, or maybe even more critical, is that we get good financing options.
Right. So we want to get those financing options in place.
Absolutely.
That we need to move the dates forward so people will actually use them.
Yes, so two things. You need the financing and you need the mandates.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Members? All right, go ahead. Next bill. Moving on to HB 1893 relating to cesspool conversions. First is Department of Health.
Morning Chairs, Vice Chairs, Committee Members. John Nagata, Department of Health. The Department stands by its written testimony in support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Hulu Mamo Hawaiian Civic Club on Zoom.
Hey, aloha. Kiony Shizumo from Hulu Mamo Hawaiian Civic Club. I just stand on my written testimony.
Thank you. Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition.
Thank you Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. Ted Boland, on behalf of Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. This bill would, would enable, it would update the Act 153 grants from 2022 that I referred to a moment ago. And it's great to have these grants. It also includes a positions at the Department of Health. Next bill as well. Some of these bills do the same thing with regard to establishing positions at the Department of Health to help implement the Act 153 grants with two FTEs, and I think we could have some consolidation here. But we do need the positions at the Department of Health because their staff is already burdened with everything else they're doing, and they need help in order to run this program effectively. So we support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Access to Sunscreens on Zoom. Okay, not present. Hawaii Realtors. Waste Water Alternatives and Innovation on Zoom.
Aloha Chairs and Committee Members. Stuart Coleman from BI. Yes, I would agree that this bill is desperately needed because as part of the State's Cesspool Conversion Working Group, we really all agreed that funding is one of the most critical issues, and this is building upon an already proven and established successful program. As an amendment, it raises the rate, I think, from 20,000 to 30,000, especially, this is really important because it's for low to moderate income folks. And with the cost, you know, going, you know, up to 30,000 and above, I think we're going to need the additional funding. But because the program kind of was completely, the funds were exhausted, the $5 million in the space of three days, I would suggest that we need more funding for it. So I'd recommend, you know, at least 10 to 15 million because we know there's demand out there. There's a long waiting list. So mahalo for your, your consideration on this.
Thank you. That's all we have signed up. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony? Okay, seeing none. Questions? I have a quick question. Sorry, I should have asked before, for Department of Health. I think this bill came from what was originally an admin proposal, and so we had that drafted up just to be able to consider what was being proposed in this, but now it seems like the admin position has changed. Because it was an admin proposal to up the amount from 20,000 to 30,000, but now your testimony is saying, don't do that, so.
I mean, we, all we were saying was, if, I wasn't honestly, I wasn't aware of that admin bill when it started in January, but what we were trying to make clear was that if you are going to up it, you know, to consider how it's going to affect the initial grant program recipients, because, you know, with the timing, it's very close, they're going to feel like they're short of 10,000.
That makes sense.
Or to consider at least somehow getting them additional funds. So I just wanted to point that out. I wasn't aware of the previous admin bill.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. That's all. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to HB 1898 relating to cesspool conversions. Department of Health.
Morning Chairs, Vice Chairs, Committee Members. John Nagata, Department of Health. The Department stands by its written testimony in support with comments of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition.
Ted Boland for the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. This is the last of the nine. We support this bill as well, and we support this because it provides for grants and for funding two FTEs at the Department, both of which are necessary in order to move forward this good grant program, which as the previous speaker indicated, people took very quickly. So there's a demand out there. Those who know about the cesspool problem, know they have a cesspool. Some of them are really happy to upgrade their systems if they have grants. So let's, let's have some money in there, at least the $5 million, but it'd be better to have even more. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Hawaii Realtors. Thank you. Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party on Zoom.
Aloha, good morning. Aloha, good morning Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committees. My name's Melody Aduhah, the Co-Chair of the Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party. The Hawaii Cesspool Compliance Pilot Grant Project is a critical initiative aimed at addressing the challenges posed by cesspools in the state. Initiating it with $5 million in state general funds is important because there are approximately 83,000 cesspools which pose risks to groundwater, nearshore ecosystems, and public health. Upgrading or converting cesspools is essential to protect our water quality and prevent contamination. Cesspools release harmful pathogens, nutrients, and chemicals into the environment. This grant project will help homeowners transition to safer wastewater systems, reducing health risk. Offering grants encourage homeowners to act as finance, to act as financial assistance and make cesspool upgrades more accessible. Upgrading wastewater systems improve property values and contribute to sustainable development. Protecting our water resources benefits tourism, fisheries, and the overall quality of life. The grant program also establishes two positions to implement and manage the program, and it creates jobs in engineering, planning, and accounting. Investing in cesspool conversions now saves costs associated with environmental damage and health consequences in the future. Allocating $5 million in state general revenues kickstarts the cesspool compliance pilot grant program, safeguarding Hawaii's environment and public health. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. That's all signed up. Anyone else wishing to provide testimony?
Aloha, Lea Laramie with the Hawaii State Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission. I know I was able to submit testimony for some, but not all of these bills on cesspools. I just wanted to highlight the real urgency there is here with sea level rise ever increasing as we move forward, more and more cesspools are going to be vulnerable, and we'll see more and more leakage into our water systems and impacting human and native ecosystems' health. So just really wanted to thank you all for considering all these different bills and appreciate your consideration. Mahalo.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none. Questions? Okay, no questions. We'll move on to HB 2738 relating to renewable energy. Department of Accounting and General Services.
Chairs, Co-Chairs, and Committee Members. Gordon Wood, on behalf of the Department of Accounting and General Services. The Department stands on its written testimony, offering comments, and I'm available for any related questions.
Thank you. Hawaii State Energy Office.
Aloha Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. Maria Tome, Hawaii State Energy Office. We stand on our written testimony with comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Greenpeace Hawaii.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yep. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Dave Mullins, Greenpeace Hawaii. We stand in strong support of HB 2738. Thank you Chairs Lowen and Ichiyama and Committee Members for hearing this very important legislation. This bill is just good common sense. One of the most important aspects of the bill is it ensures that essential public services will be able to function and respond during a major disaster. We saw how important this was during the last hurricane in Puerto Rico, where their grid was wiped out and all essential services were not able to function except for one fire station that had solar and battery backup storage. And so they were able to function, provide services, and communicate with their community. Climate change is bringing larger and more devastating hurricanes, so it's essential that we are prepared before one of these major hurricanes hits Hawaii and wipes out our grid. So please pass 2738, and thank you so much for your ongoing work to protect our climate. We appreciate you very much. Aloha.
Thank you. 350 Hawaii on Zoom.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Aloha Chairs, Vice Chairs, Committee Members. My name is Sherry Pollak, and I'm with 350 Hawaii. 350 Hawaii is in strong support of this measure. I stand on our written testimony, but I just wanted to highlight, this bill is a lead-by-exemple measure for solar plus storage for state facilities with a priority for first responder facilities. The bill will initially cost us some money, but ultimately it saves us money while protecting the climate. But at its core, this bill is about saving lives. The better we are prepared for the next disaster that is bound to hit, we will save lives and be able to recover faster from whatever disaster has occurred. I only wish this bill had become law before the tragedy that occurred in Lahaina. Please pass this important measure. Again, I want to thank the Committee for all your support, and mahalo for hearing this measure.
Thank you. Hawaii Solar Energy Association on Zoom.
Aloha, Chairs Lowen and Ichiyama, Members of the Committee. Rocky Molt, Hawaii Solar Energy Association. Thank you for hearing this bill. I'll stand on our written testimony in support, and just note that, under normal conditions, distributed solar and energy storage builds resilience by saving money on energy bills and protecting us from the volatility of oil prices. When disaster strikes, that power that is provided is a critical resource that saves lives. And we saw that at play after the disaster in Lahaina, where, you know, distributed solar and energy storage systems are to this day still providing power for distribution centers in West Maui. So I'll stand on my written testimony in support. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party on Zoom.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. I'm Melody Aduhah, Co-Chair of the Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party. A feasibility study is essential to determine whether state facilities should transition to solar energy with priority focus on first responder facilities. Solar installations involve initial costs, ongoing maintenance, and potential savings. A feasibility study will examine the finance feasibility by analyzing payback periods, return on investment, and cost effectiveness. A study will assess the energy requirements of state facilities, especially for first responders. Solar systems must meet operational needs without compromising safety. First responder facilities require a robust system to maintain critical services during emergencies. Going solar aligns with environmental goals and reduces greenhouse gas emissions. A study would evaluate the positive impact on environmental and public health. Involving stakeholders, including first responders, foster support for solar energy in state facilities. A feasibility study would engage relevant parties, address concerns, and namely implementation in five years. Prioritizing first responder facilities aligns with strategic goals, and a study would provide information on long-term planning and resource allocation. A feasibility study provides a comprehensive understanding of the benefits, challenges, and practicality of transitioning state facilities to solar energy with a focus on ensuring the resilience and effectiveness of first responders. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Next is Sandy Wong on Zoom.
Yes, I'm here. So I will stand on my written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all signed up to testify. Anyone else wishing to provide testimony? Okay, seeing none. Questions? Okay, no questions. We'll move on to House Bill 1629 relating to renewable energy. Attorney General.
Good morning Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committees. Alison Cotto, Deputy Attorney General. This bill contains provision in Subsection J that doesn't appear in the current statute, and it wasn't underlined, so the intent is not clear whether it was intended to be added to the statute or not. For the reasons stated in our written testimony, we recommend that the additional provision be deleted in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Utilities Commission.
Good morning Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committees. My name is Grace Rolfe with the Public Utilities Commission. We'll stand on our written testimony, but would be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Kauai Island Utility Cooperative on Zoom.
Hi, good morning. Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. I'm Beth Amaro with KIUC. KIUC stands in strong support of this measure. We stand on our testimony, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all signed up to testify. Anyone else wishing to provide testimony? Okay, seeing none. Questions? Okay, no, no questions? All right, if no questions, we'll recess for decision-making. [applause] All right. We are adjourned. We will move on to House Bill 1629 relating to renewable energy, Attorney General.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committees. Alison Cotto, Deputy Attorney General. This bill contains provision in subsection J that doesn't appear in the current statute, and it wasn't underlined, so the intent is not clear whether it was intended to be added to the statute or not. For the reasons stated in our written testimony, we recommend that the additional provision be deleted in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Utilities Commission.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committees. My name is Grace Rolfe with the Public Utilities Commission. We'll stand on our written testimony, but would be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Kauai Island Utility Cooperative on Zoom.
Hi, good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committee. I'm Beth Amaro with KIUC. KIUC stands in strong support of this measure. We stand on our testimony, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all signed up to testify. Anyone else wishing to provide testimony? Okay, seeing none, questions? Okay, no questions? All right, if no questions, we'll recess for decision-making. [applause] All right, we are adjourned. We will move on to House Bill 1629 relating to renewable energy, Attorney General.
All right, we are back. Committee on Energy and Environmental Protection, we have a 9:30 AM agenda, Tuesday, February 13th, room 325, with one bill on the agenda, House Bill 2406 relating to state finances. So this establishes Climate, Health, and Environmental Action Special Fund in the DLNR by putting a $25 tax on transient accommodations. First up to testify, we have Office of the Governor.
Good morning, Chair, members of the committee. Blake O'Shoe, Senior Advisor for the Governor. We're in support of this bill. We want to thank you for hearing this administration measure. You have our written testimony. I'm just briefly going to summarize, if that's okay. You know, last session, the governor had proposed a green fee, but we had some problems in terms of how to implement it and how to administer it. And so this year, he came back and instead adjusted it to the $25 fee collected at the transient accommodations level, which would generate approximately about $68 million, which we believe is essential in order for us to invest in protection against climate. And so we are appreciative that you are hearing this measure. We stand in strong support, and I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And Department of Taxation, in support.
Good morning, Kristen Sakamoto, Deputy Director of Taxation. We stand on our written testimony and support. I just wanted to note, we had a couple of proposed amendments to address the revenue allocation issue, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii Tourism Authority.
Aloha, Kako, Chair, Vice Chair, members. Ilhia Giantsi for the Hawaii Tourism Authority. Also noting the presence of our President and CEO, Mr. Daniel Naho, P.E. Stand on our written testimony, available for any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. And DLNR.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Ryan Konakoli, Department of Land and Natural Resources. The department stands on its testimony and support. We also would like to note that we did offer amendments to the bill. Currently, it creates two positions to administer the fund. We believe that more is probably necessary for an effective implementation of the program, probably seven positions, and we're here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii Emergency Management Agency.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Keala Amundson, on behalf of the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. The agency stands on its written testimony and available for comments or questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Then we have the Care for Aina Now Coalition. Care for Aina Now Coalition in support. Not present. Tax Foundation of Hawaii on Zoom.
Yes, good morning, Chair, members of the committee. This is Jay McMillan, on behalf of Tamea Mchika for the Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We have submitted our comments on the measure. We'll stand on our written comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Care for Aina Now Coalition, again, Jocelyn Hebert?
Aloha, this is Jocelyn Herbert. Aloha, Chair Loan, Vice Chair Cochran, members of the committee. My name is Jocelyn Herbert with the Care for Aina Now Coalition and Resources Legacy Fund. First, let me say I'm sorry for not being able to be there in person. I tried. The Kona Airport runway was closed again this morning, so my apologies. We strongly support this bill because it takes a significant step forward to protect Hawaii's communities and natural resources from climate change and overuse, and we appreciate your committee's actions in recent years to approve similar legislation. You have already recognized that the lack of funds, which we estimate at a gap of at least $360 million annually, puts our environment, communities, and our economy at risk. With the very real and terrible harms that are now affecting our communities, it's more important than ever, we believe, that we arm the Department of Land and Natural Resources and local communities with funds to prevent wildfires, to protect our reefs and beaches, and to restore our watersheds and forests. We're really encouraged that this bill would provide ongoing funds for natural resources and communities, and respectfully urge you to pass the bill. Mahalo.
Thank you. And then we have Citizens Climate Lobby in support. In person. And then Henry Deng signed up.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Thank you for taking the time to hear House Bill 2406 relating to the establishment of the Climate, Health, and Environmental Action Special Fund. As an individual, I stand in strong support of this bill, as it will bolster the funds needed to combat our worsening environment. And additionally, I believe these funds would be appropriated efficiently, further safeguarding Hawaii's
All right, reconvening for decision making on our 9:05 a.m. agenda. Joint Committees of Energy and Environmental Protection and Water and Land. First up, we have House Bill 2743. So for this bill, we're going to take the amendments of Department of Health. I think that includes some language for positions with numbers in there. So we'll add those in, but we'll have blank amounts. But we'll note any of the dollar amounts in the committee report. And then we'll defect the date to the year 3000, make some technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and move this forward. Members, any discussion? If not, vice chair, please take the vote.
Voting on HB 2743. Chair recommendation passed with amendments. Chair and vice chair vote ayes. And let's see, Representative Gates is excused. Representative Kahaloa.
Aye.
Representative Peruso.
Aye.
Representative Woodson is excused. And Representative Ward also excused. Chair, your measure is adopted.
All right, and then next we have House Bill.
Chair, sorry.
Oh, sorry, I do that every time. Committee on Water and Land. See, you got to sit over here.
Waterland Committee, same recommendation. Any discussion? Okay, chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 2743, recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair, vice chair vote aye. Rep Chen. Rep Ganyaden is excused. Rep Hashem is excused. Rep Mizuno.
Aye.
Rep Morikawa.
Aye.
Rep Takayama.
Aye.
Rep Suzan.
Aye.
Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members.
Thanks. And then House Bill 2264. This is the demonstration pilot program through UH. So we will add a purpose clause noting why this is of statewide concern based on the AG's comments. We'll add a blank appropriation and affect the date to the year 3000 and move this forward. Members, any discussion? If not.
Voting on HB 2264. Chair's recommendation to pass with amendments. Chair, vice chair vote ayes. Noting excused absences of reps Woodson, Ward, and Gates. Members present, anyone voting with reservations or no's? Seeing none, chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you.
Okay, Waterland Committee, same recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none, chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 2264. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting reps Ganyaden, Hashem excused. Any reservations or no's? Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members.
All right, House Bill 2066. On this, we're going to defer this at this time just based on the fact that the commercial program is still working to be implemented and the concerns from the banking industry and the fact that I think there's just a lot of cesspool bills and we have other ones that are higher priority, I think, and more in line with the recommendations of the working group. So yeah, defer it this time and then maybe it'll be more appropriate to take up when we have some of the other steps in place. Next on the agenda, House Bill 1759. For this one, we'll take the Department of Health suggested amendments, I think just relating to the prioritization tool language and affect the date to the year 3000 and move this forward. Vice chair, no discussion, vice chair, please take the vote.
Voting on HB 1759. Chair elects to pass with amendments. Excused are reps Woodson, Ward, and Gates. Any members present voting with no's or reservations? Seeing none, chair, your measure is adopted.
Waterline Committee, same recommendation for House Bill 1759. Any discussion? Seeing none, chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 1759. Recommendation to pass with amendments, noting reps Ganyaden, Hashem excused. Any reservations or no's? Recommendation adopted.
Thank you, members.
All right, on House Bill 1894, we're going to also defer this at this time and some of this language we're going to add to other bills as we consolidate some of the bills on this agenda. But I think that the language relating to the seller's disclosure, we're going to leave out at this time since it already is a requirement on the standard disclosure form. And again, just to focus our efforts on the priority measures that need to be moved this year. House Bill 1691. This is the denitrification bill. So on this one, my recommendation is to move it forward, taking Department of Health amendments. I think the suggestion from Councilmember Kimball to change that language from 50 feet to 200 feet of a shoreline and then the recommendations from the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. And then, of course, all of these, note changing that to be above sea level, not below sea level. So we'll make sure to get that. And then we will also defect the date to the year 3000 and move this forward. Members, any discussion? If not, vice chair.
Voting on HB 1691. Chair recommends to pass with amendments. Noting excused absences with reps Woodson, Ward, and Gates. Members present, any no's or reservations? Seeing none, chair, your measure is adopted.
Waterline Committee, same recommendation. Any discussion? Okay, chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 1691. Recommendation to pass with amendments, noting rep Hashem excused. Any reservations or no's? Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members.
Okay, House Bill 1892. This is going to be the vehicle for a lot of stuff in some of the other bills. So I have a number of things. First up, as noted in testimony, we need to fix the bill description, which says the conversion date is 2045, which is not correct. We're going to take the language from House Bill 1894 regarding the public outreach and education and put that in this bill. And we're going to include in that, I think to that language, DOH had some recommended amendments just about the prioritization language. But we're going to keep the funding the same as was in the original bill and not take all of DOH's amendments. We're going to, again, take DOH's recommendations about correcting the name of the prioritization tool throughout and then add the language in about the positions that was in House Bill 1893. So taking that language that DOH suggested in their testimony on HB 1893 and putting that in 18192. But we will have blank appropriation amounts, also noting in the committee report the amounts that were recommended in testimony for those. We'll need additional technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. Oh, on this bill as well, I think at this time, we're going to remove the tax credit language altogether. Again, just to focus on the things that we think are highest priority at this time. And then additional technical amendments, and then we will defect the date to the year 3000 and move this forward. Members, any discussion? If not, vice chair.
Voting on HB 1892. Chair's recommendation pass with amendments. Chair, vice chair vote ayes. Excused are reps Woodson, Ward, Gates. Any members with reservations or no's? Seeing none, chair, your measure is adopted.
Waterline Committee, same recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none, chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 1892. Recommendations to pass with amendments, rep Hashem excused. Any reservations or no's? Recommendation adopted.
Thank you, members.
And then for House Bill 1893 and 1898, we're going to defer both of these since there's similar language that is moving forward in 1892. So then we're moving on to House Bill 2738 relating to renewable energy. This is requiring state facilities to install distributed energy systems. So for this, we have technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. And then we will defect the date to the year 3000 and move this bill forward. Members, any discussion? If not, vice chair.
Voting on HB 2738. Chair's recommendation pass with amendments. Excused are reps Woodson, Ward, Gates. Members, any no's or reservations? Seeing none, chair, your measure is adopted.
Waterline Committee, same recommendation. Any discussion? Hearing none, chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 2738. Recommendation to pass with amendments, noting rep Hashem excused. Any reservations or no's? Recommendation adopted.
Thank you, members.
And then last on the agenda, House Bill 1692 relating to renewable energy. For this, we're going to adopt the amendments of the Public Utilities Commission as well as KIUC and some technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, defect the date to the year 3000, and move this forward. Members, any discussion? If not, please take the vote.
Voting on HB 1629. Chair's recommendation pass with amendments. Excused are reps Woodson, Ward, and Gates. Members, any no's or reservations? Seeing none, chair, your measure is adopted.
Waterline Committee, same recommendation. Any discussion? Hearing none, chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 1629. Recommendation to pass with amendments, noting rep Hashem excused. Any reservations or no's? Seeing none, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members.
All right, we are adjourned. All right, we are back. Committee on Energy and Environmental Protection, we have a 9:30 a.m. agenda Tuesday, February 13th, room 325, with one bill on the agenda. House Bill 2406 relating to state finances. So this establishes Climate, Health, and Environmental Action Special Fund in the DLNR by putting a $25 tax on transient accommodations. First up to testify, we have Office of the Governor.
Morning, Chair, members of the committee. Blake O'Shaughnessy, senior advisor for the Governor. We're in support of this bill. We want to thank you for hearing this administration measure. You have our written testimony. I'm just briefly going to summarize if that's okay. You know, last session, the Governor had proposed a green fee, but we had some problems in terms of how to implement it and how to administer it. And so this year, he came back and instead adjusted it so it's a $25 fee collected at the transient accommodations level, which would generate approximately about $68 million, which we believe is essential in order for us to invest in protection against climate. And so we are appreciative that you're hearing this measure. We stand in strong support, and I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And Department of Taxation, in support.
Good morning. Kristin Sakamoto, Deputy Director of Taxation. We stand on our written testimony in support. I just wanted to note, we had a couple of proposed amendments to address the revenue allocation issue, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii Tourism Authority.
Aloha, Kako. Chair, vice chair, members. Ilhia Jianciu for the Hawaii Tourism Authority. Also noting the presence of our President and CEO, Mr. Daniel Naho P. Stand on our written testimony, available for any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Aloha, Chair, vice chair, members of the committee. Ryan Konakoli, Department of Land and Natural Resources. The department stands on its testimony in support. We also would like to note that we did offer amendments to the bill. Currently, it creates two positions to administer the fund. We believe that more is probably necessary for an effective implementation of the program, probably seven positions. And we're here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii Emergency Management Agency.
Aloha, Chair, vice chair, members of the committee. Kele Amundsen, on behalf of the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. The agency stands on its written testimony and available for comments or questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Then we have the Care for Aina Now Coalition. Care for Aina Now Coalition in support. Not present. Tax Foundation of Hawaii on Zoom.
Yes, good morning, Chair, members of the committee. This is Jay McMillan on behalf of Tamea M'Chika for the Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We have submitted our comments on the measure. We'll stand on our written comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Care for Aina Now Coalition, again, Jocelyn Hebert?
Aloha, this is Jocelyn Herbert. Oha, Chair Loa and vice chair Cochran, members of the committee. My name is Jocelyn Herbert with the Care for Aina Now Coalition and Resources Legacy Fund. First, let me say I'm sorry for not being able to be there in person. I tried. The Kona Airport runway was closed again this morning. So my apologies. We strongly support this bill because it takes a significant step forward to protect Hawaii's communities and natural resources from climate change and overuse. And we appreciate your committee's actions in recent years to approve similar legislation. You have already recognized that the lack of funds, which we estimate at a gap of at least $360 million annually, puts our environment, communities, and our economy at risk. With the very real and terrible harms that are now affecting our communities, it's more important than ever. We believe that we arm the Department of Land and Natural Resources and local communities with funds to prevent wildfires, to protect our reefs and beaches, and to restore our watersheds and forests. We're really encouraged that this bill would provide ongoing funds for natural resources and communities and respectfully urge you to pass the bill. Mahalo.
Thank you. And then we have Citizens Climate Lobby in support in person. And then Henry Deng signed up.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair, vice chair, and members of the committee. Thank you for taking the time to hear House Bill 2406 relating to the establishment of the Climate, Health, and Environmental Action Special Fund. As an individual, I stand in strong support of this bill as it will bolster the funds needed to combat our worsening environment. And additionally, I believe these funds would be appropriated efficiently, further safeguarding Hawaii's nature, beauty, and future for the generations that will come after us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I think that's everyone we had sign up in person. We have a lot of additional testimony, written testimony submitted, mostly in support, a little bit in opposition. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? Please come forward.
Aloha, Chair, vice chair. Apologize if I didn't get my testimony to you. Focus in time, I'll make sure to get that lay of larynx from the Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission. We stand in strong support of this bill and available for questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Anyone else here to testify?
Aloha, Chair, vice chair, members of the committee. I think I missed my cue earlier because I wasn't the official Care for Aina Now, but I did help submit the sign-on letter for Care for Aina Now Coalition. And it has 47 signatories or nonprofits and businesses across the state that support measures like this and many others. This is just one of many ways that we can close the gap, the budget shortfall that we have, about $360 million annually for the DLNR and other solutions to protect and preserve Hawaii special places. These are like our reefs, forests, beaches, coastlines, the things that make Hawaii Hawaii. I've been an environmental advocate for more than 10 years in Hawaii, and it is disheartening seeing what's happening in Maui and many other places, the impacts of climate change. And we're just really urging you to support this measure. Thank you.
Anyone else here to testify? Please come forward.
Ted Boland, on behalf of the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition and the Climate Protectors Hawaii, thank you for the opportunity to testify, Chair, vice chairs, members of the committee. I just want to add our voices to the others who have said we need this. For the Reef and Ocean Coalition, the reefs are critical. For the climate protectors, we need to have resources to combat climate change, and both of these things are very important. And the money that's coming in here is critical for those needs. So thank you for the opportunity to testify and support of this bill.
Thank you. And I think our last testifier today.
Aloha, Chair, vice chair, Kay Cole McLoughlin, on behalf of the American Hotel and Lodging Association, offering some comments on this measure. I want to first start by saying that AHLA and our members support the establishment of a Climate, Health, and Environmental Action Special Fund, as we have consistently supported, including in the 2023 legislative session. This is an important activity, and we applaud you for taking up this issue. We will continue to support the establishment of such a fund. We have some comments on how we generate enough revenue to support this critical need. Yuri Gibson from the Hawaii Hotel Lines did submit some comments pointing specifically to the deletion of the proposed TAT on pages 19 and 20 and restoring the exception for combinations furnished without a charge on page 20. But I think with HB 2406 and its counterpart, it's important to note that if we're going to honor the intent of this fund, which is to capture the impact of guests to our wahipana, to our islands, then we need to make sure that we're not ignoring everyone who's visiting us here. And as written, if we're collecting only at our hotels, because effectively we know that it will be the hotels that will follow up on collecting any additional tax, we're ignoring the tens of thousands of illegal short-term rentals that are really driving the public's concern around the impacts of over tourism in our islands. We want to make sure that we're not ignoring that. Also, as written, we would ignore people who are arriving on cruise ships, people who are staying with friends and family, people who are not at one of our hotel properties. I will also note that as written, this bill is an effective tax on our kamaina. So, you know, if we're traveling from Kona to Honolulu, or if we're here for some medical care, or we're going to visit family on Maui, we will be paying that $25 fee. So to put that in context, if you're staying at a $99 rate, a kamaina rate, at a local hotel, that's a $25 increase to that rate. It is not something that a hotel property would legally be allowed to discount. And so we would ask your strong consideration for those amendments, for your continued support for such a fund, but to consider removing that burden on our hotel properties that are working very diligently to continue to care for our wahipana and our people here. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members, questions? If not, are you guys all okay if we go straight to decision making? Okay. On this bill, we're going to move this forward at this time for further consideration. We'll accept the amendments of Department of Taxation, make some technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and blank out any dollar amounts, but note those dollar amounts in the committee report and defect the date to the year 3000. And then maybe just also note in the committee report that there are measures also moving, looking at the green fee, which would be another increase on TAT, and that those should be considered together. We should look at the big picture when we're looking at this. And with that, any discussion, members? If not, vice chair.
Voting on HB 2406. Chair recommends to pass with amendments. Both chair, vice chair vote ayes. Excused are reps Woodson, Ward, and Gates. Any members here voting with reservations or no's? Seeing none, chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you, and we'll adjourn this, and we will reconvene our decision-making agenda. We had a 9:31 decision-making agenda set for House Bill 1688. That was previously heard on February 8th. It is Tuesday, February 13th, in room 325. We're decision-making on House Bill 1688. So for this bill, we're going to make some amendments. To address some of the concerns in testimony, starting with in section two. Section two, the sub point two under that, we will add the words global and national to the second kind of bullet point in that list of what stakeholders should be consulted with. So we'll say global and national producer responsibility organizations. We'll strike through or nonprofits established to administer producer responsibility programs and change that wording to say, including PROs actively working on reusable packaging systems. Then we'll add two additional bullets to this list. So we'll include organizations or community groups representing native Hawaiian community and environmental justice, and environmental and human health scientist. And then subsection B, or we'll add, I guess, a new, insert a new subsection B, which would be to say that the department shall convene an advisory council to review the draft needs And the advisory council membership will include counties, producers, two producers, two expert operators of reuse refillers, circular economy systems, a Hawaii-based refuse service provider, a Hawaii-based recycling collection processing service provider, representative from Hawaii-based retailers, including restaurants, wholesalers, and distributors, two representatives from Hawaii-based organizations and community groups involved with waste management, one from the native Hawaiian community or environmental justice community, and one from environmental and human health, excuse me, perspective. Almost made it through without a coughing, but I think I can make it. I think the dollar amounts in here are already blank, but we're going to note that I think the amount Department of Health had said in their testimony they might need was $1 million. We'll put that in the committee report. And then I'll also just say we opted not to change the definition of producer because there was not agreement among producers of what the definition of producer should be. And part of the needs assessment work will be to come up with an appropriate definition of producer through that process. So we don't think trying to finesse it at this time is going to help move this conversation forward. And then we'll also make additional technical amendments and then defect the date to the year 3000. I think that is it. With that, members, any discussion? If not, vice chair. Oh, Rep Peruso.
I think I may be voting with reservations on this because even with the amendments, I think it doesn't, they don't really address the concerns about duplication and timing that were expressed by multiple testifiers. So I'm just going to be with reservations.
Okay, thanks. All right, members, if no further discussion, please take the vote.
Okay. Voting on HB 1688. Chair recommends to vote, to pass with amendments. Chair and vice chair vote aye. Excused absences are Gates, Woodson, and Ward. Any members at this time voting with reservations? Ms. Peruso, reservations?
Yep.
And any no's? Seeing none, chair, your measure is adopted.
All right, with that, we are adjourned.